Okay. This is YDOT, or is it?
No, it's just the app for you.
Mayor Council, thanks for having us. This is our yearly STIP tour, STIP presentations, State Transportation Improvement Program presentation for YDOT District 4, which is northeast Wyoming. I'm Scott Taylor, I'm district engineer for District 4. We'll announce, I think Laura probably told everybody, we do have a signup sheet going around for this. This is a public meeting that we have for these, so we do like to have those for our processes, okay? So, so we'll get right into what we're gonna go over here. Like I said, District 4, which is northeast Wyoming, basically the top of the Big Horns over here to South Dakota, and then south down in Niagara County a little bit. Sherwin, Happy Johnson, about ninety-five, ninety-eight percent, Campbell County, Old Crook, and then of course, here at Old Weston County, okay? So, what we're gonna talk about is an overview of YDOT, the development of our state transportation improvement program, future projects over the next six years in Newcastle and Weston County area, and what some next steps are to do after that. And some introductions of our YDOT leadership. We do have a, well, about a year now, a new director, Darren Westby. Mark Gillette's our chief engineer in Cheyenne. There's myself. Our two transportation commissioners are Susan Holes, who's the chair, and she covers Sherwin, Johnson, Campbell Counties, and Mark Hughes, everybody knows him from around here in this area, is a commissioner for Weston and Weston County. Locally, no, excuse me, district staff. We have Larry Kineski, he's our maintenance engineer. Isaac Finkel couldn't be here tonight to talk about his projects. He's our construction engineer. Michelle Edwards O is here, is our traffic engineer. And then, Tim Williams Lowes, our equipment supervisor. Laura Dallas, our public relations specialist is here, gets this all organized for us. We have a safety officer in the district, Jason Green, and HR, Jenny Sullivan, and the captain of the entire district is Ben Schlosser. Also at this time, he's not on the slide, but Bob Bonds with the FH Federal Highway Administration is here, our area engineer. Locally, still vacant. Resident engineer in Newcastle, if you have been monitoring that. And that's, well, July, that's two years vacant right now. Still cannot seem to get applications. Brad Marchant is our area management supervisor. Guy Phillips, local guy here, is a Newcastle foreman. Dean Bethay is our shop supervisor, covers Creek and Weston. And Joe Lambert's our senior heavy mechanic that helps out over here in Newcastle. And Lieutenant Tim Boamister is our lieutenant for Creek and Weston areas. So, assets we got out there for District 4, all our miles of road and bridges and so on, over thirty-three hundred miles of road, two-hundred-seventy-two bridges, which is the most of any district in the state. I think that includes those five-hundred-twenty-eight structures. Over seven-five hundred pipe, hundred-and-fifty miles of guard rail, almost thirteen thousand signs in the district, and over two-thousand miles of fence. But I actually think it's been rebuilt since. We lost three-and-a-half miles down here on Highway 450 a few weeks ago, alright? So, and I think the guys already rebuilt it, so. If not, they were working on it. So, purpose, mission, vision, and values of why we're here, what we do, what YDOT does, and why? It's to support Wyoming's economy and quality of life by connecting those communities safely, provide safety, effective transportation system, providing that excellence in transportation. We do that with our values, which is respect, integrity, dedication, excellence, and safety. Areas of focus for YDOT is to recognize, retain, and recruit our employees, our people, as their most important asset. Always try and secure that additional funding and develop our brand, which we're in process of doing right now. Strategic objectives of YDOT, we serve our customer, ensure transparency in public engagement such as meetings like this. Value our team, develop and maintain those strategic partnerships with our local communities and counties. Appropriately manage our resources to continue to improve and innovate always. We want to align our expenditures as per our guiding principles with the available revenue we got coming in. Focus on addressing those critical life safety issues, such as a slide or any kind of natural disaster that could cause those kind of things. Prioritize YDOT asset preservation based on the conditions of those and meet those goals and improve operational effectiveness and efficiency always. Prioritize our activities to minimize impacts to the public, which is one of our main roles. And then lastly, to address mobility and capacity is a lower priority right now as to where our funding streams are. Many programs within YDOT listed there. Of course, engineering, planning is our designers and the construction folks out in about, like, our resident engineer crew here, our construction crew. Mr. Phillips is our maintenance guys and our equipment, we include everything. But other programs out at headquarters are course traffic, highway patrol, aeronautics, and so on. Federal funding pots for fiscal year '25. Biggest one is almost $200 million coming in from the feds for our National Highway Performance Program. And then the next big chunk is our Surface Transportation Block Grants, which is our state transportation program for almost another hundred million. And then lots of other projects coming in, such as Weston County and the city of Newcastle be participated in, as in Crip projects and CMAC and parole jobs and stuff like that I'll go through. So, our federal highway bill currently that's out there in '25, YDOT will be receiving three-hundred over $360 million. That is federal funds. We do have to max those federal funds for many of our grants and construction projects. The national average is you get seventy percent. Most states, seventy percent of that comes from the state and only thirty percent federal. We're the opposite. Wyoming, we're almost thirty percent and seventy-two percent federal that's coming in. Funding sources that are going out, that we provide to cities and county governments. Biggest block there, fifty, almost half of it, forty-four million bucks, or the state match, money we're providing for those communities. And then, the next largest one is a local max coming in for most communities with our authority to render service agreements of almost twenty-six million. And then the next biggest is the Tansent fuel adjustment. Tansent of that, I should say, comes coming in for fifteen million bucks. Purpose of developing STIP is to get public input and need to know what other local agencies are doing to coordinate those jobs, okay? As per the federal requirements, CFR, Mr. Bonds will probably tell me that number's wrong, 450.218, but...
Twenty-three CFR?
Twenty-three CFRs? I didn't want to be too big of a nerd to know that exactly. We need to develop that for all areas for a minimum of four years. We do it for every six years now. Need to cooperate with the NPOs and other non- metropolitan areas, consult with other tribal governments, and then provide opportunities for the public to comment, ensure inclusion in all the capital and non-capital projects. Have consistency across our plan. Have that financial plan, and discuss any anticipated effects our STIP might have on local communities. We want to ensure the transparency by the public engagement such as meetings like this. Gather that public comment, like I said. Engage with them, consistently update, and keep it updated and available to the public. Provide the interactive map, which I'll show later, and engage with the public. A lot of partners in that, obviously, are Transportation Commission, Aeronautics Commission, and Public Service Commission. The TAP programs for the local charities, all the citizens, public agencies, and so on. We keep these partnerships through training with local governments. Our engineering meetings, our cooperative meetings, monthly meetings with all the commissions and stakeholders with project meetings. And we are required to provide public meetings to have engaged in this public model.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
And we are required to provide public meetings to have engaged in this public model. So, how we serve our customers with the STIP is to ensure our projects are prioritized each fiscally, increase system reliability, increase customer satisfaction by ensuring those projects are done quickly and effectively. Always striving for that. Update, any modifications to the STIP is to provide update to the customers of we need new changes and increasing construction timing, ensuring complete and accurate design. Always continue to improve and innovate any design solutions to ensure safety on the roads, improving pavement bridge conditions, implementing any new standards, incorporating them, revising or abandoning the STIP accordingly. Shelf projects. So, we have not discussed this in years past, but we strive to have $330 million every year on the shelf, ready to go. So, we use that to stabilize if we get any more money coming in or if a project has to be moved. It allows us to have that buffer for additional time for unforeseen stuff. But $330 million bucks a year is what we always want, and we do achieve that. Planning phase of the highway project process is talking about this, the STIP, any reconnaissance, inspections, surveying, and public input. And consistently on the bottom there talks about public. Even through the design phase of all those planning issuances and contracting phase of all the advisement, you know, and then the award, and of course, the construction. Same thing, public meetings as appropriate. Always keeping the public engaged. There is that online STIP project map. Click, I'll go in there onto our website, which will be listed towards the end here. And click on any of those balloons for each year, and all that information will come up, on where it's at, what the scope is, what the engineer's estimate is, and so forth. And a window to be able to comment. Distribution-wise across our district for the next six years, Weston County, I can't read it from here, but is getting a little over $52 million with the construction jobs over the next six years. And those projects are, in handout, it's going around, I believe. This year, of course, we've got the railroad bridge going on in town. It's not listed here because it's been already gone. And moving forward on that, as you can see, and contractors working on it appropriately, okay? We do have another small project in the area for guard rail jumping across here that the Newcastle office is handling. Then next year, we have a Newcastle-to-right on Highway 450, the Claritin section, for thirteen-point-six miles as a melon overlay. And the one locally of Noak, of big interest, is the railroad bridge over that old Highway 85 on County Road 1A for $5 million. And that'll go to bid in fiscal year '25, which fiscal year starts October 1, and then, I think you actually, I don't know, six into November, right? Then in '26, we have another melon overlay on almost six miles between Sundance and Upton on Wyoming 116 North. And then the next year, south. Upton's south job for another thirteen-and-a-half miles. Those are roughly $4 million and $9 million respectively. And if anybody travels that, which I'm sure you all do, know the damage that's going on there, right there with the frac sand hauling. And we actually did place a weight restriction on that. So, if they are hauling on those, well, south of Upton right now, then they're pretty significantly less than what they were before. So, we're monitoring that damage all the time. So, those two projects will help that. Then in '27 also is the Crip project, which is out, goes on each side of that railroad bridge we're gonna replace on County Road 1A. Scope of that is that full-death reclamation, maybe some minor drainage work and paving. And that's, that $900,000 is not correct right now. It's gonna be, I'm gonna guess, two to three million. We're getting solid estimates of that together for the county. We do have two bridge replacements in the county with a bridge funding program out on Beaver Creek and unnamed draw right next to it. I believe that's probably a box replacement and then a bridge replacement. Nothing in '28 yet, but that, this varies so much, and it's very variable and dynamic document. Bet there will be some in '28. Then in '29, up to Osage on Highway 16 West, another mill level and overlay for almost $15 million bucks. And then lastly, '2030, the Black Tail Creek section on south on Highway 85 for almost fourteen miles. So, there's that fifty-two, almost $5300 Weston County's getting in the next six years down the block, the Weston County area. Delayed construction projects, nothing affected in this area. Blue ones are the ones in our areas due to funding streams difficulty right now. And they're in Sherwin and in South and Gillette. And those are those mobility and capacity projects we're not moving around. There's the two bridges I referenced in '27, unnamed draw and Beaver Creek. I bet, Mr. Urban, you might know what the unnamed draw there actually is named, I don't know.
I don't know if the unnamed draw. I don't know what the name is.
So, transit projects. I know this area does participate in their Federal Transit Administration, which the legislature annually quarters funds to YDOT. All twenty-three counties do participate. Is primarily provided by senior centers within the state. Local max between fifteen and fifty percent, depending on the funding type and applications are available from March 1st to April 15th. Funds are available for operating and admin and preventive maintenance on the public transit operations. Also to replace, replace and purchase buses, rehabilitate, rehabilitate and purchase buses. Have that planning and intercity bus transport in larger areas. Grant opportunities, there's our website that goes to that. I'll talk about the gentleman at the end. There's lots of grant opportunities that I referenced earlier with local matches. This website contains all the information on those, whether they're federal grants, guidance on documentation and application process. And those are some examples of what those can be. Zero emission, highway safety, aeronautics. And like I said in the previous slide, transportation, or local government transportation program. So, the next steps I talked about, we need to, YDOT, contact, you can contact YDOT to learn about our opportunities for any of the funding locally, the partnerships and supply purchases. Visit our STIP page, provide any feedback you'd like. Talk about the chief engineer and myself. We have two assistant chief engineers in Cheyenne, one for engineering and planning, Keith Fulton. Tom Dehoff's my supervisor. He's assistant chief engineer of operations. Sarah Iles is our local government coordinator, who, her program handles all the TAP grants and CMAC and all those transit programs that are out there too. John Davis is a gentleman I mentioned earlier. He's our management services manager. And he is the grant guru, so, he's the guy to contact on those. So, provide any feedback you can. There's online meetings that can be accessed on the bottom right there on that website. And that's the end of our presentation, other than for any comments or questions.
Yes, I have one question. Last year, one of the council members asked if you guys could do a study over at our four-way stop during rally. I don't know if that was ever done or concluded. Because I was just asked about it the other day, if we were gonna have like a temporary like there.
Yeah, Mayor, that's why Michelle Edwards is here, the traffic engineer, and I know she's dying to speak to that.
Well, I am, but unfortunately. So, we did put up our scanners last year during Sturgis, and they malfunctioned during the time. So, we didn't get the full slew of data that we wanted, which is frustrating, but it's only, you know, only that time. We only had that week to gather that. So, we didn't get the data that we wanted, and... It's frustrating, but it's only, you know, only that time. We only had that week to gather that. So, we didn't get the data that we wanted. And we, as we were prepping for this year, we talked about trying to do it again, but I don't feel like that'll be as good of data because we're looking at Camburi traffic as well this year. I'm sure you're all aware of the Camburi Gillette, that I don't think that will be an appropriate picture of what just Sturgis traffic does. So, we're looking at, we'll try and look at it the next year.
Okay, so, how far are we this year?
No, no, there's no plan for any temporary this year.
Yes, sir. Who do we talk to about getting a really nice, big sign right where you guys are working on their overpass, just direct where it goes into Newcastle? What's the name of that street? Yeah, Senate Street, goes right beside the old Junior High Building. And it says, "Welcome to our downtown, historic downtown Newcastle." Now, you got one that there that says, you know, "Business District." But I want something that says "Historic Downtown Newcastle." We've got several historic areas down there. There's one wonderful building called the Ambers Hotel.
No, Mayor Councilman, we do have programs for that too. And contact is either us, YDOT District, me, or Michelle. And it'd be easier and quicker to go to Michelle.
And that's you, young lady?
Yes, it is. And we did recently work with the Historical Society to put up the brown signs that are throughout town. I think there were four or five of them in different places.
Right, I was just concerned about that. But that's okay. If they're already talking to you about it, I'll shut up.
Well, that's what they requested. We did that a couple of years ago. They haven't come back from any other requests, but they know how to contact me if they want...
Well, if they request them a couple of years ago and they're not up, how come?
No, no, they are. There are some new brown signs throughout town that we worked with.
No, I'm talking about, this sign that says, "Turn here," "Business District," or only...
Yeah, I think, well, they have to chat about where you want it. On our system, we do have limitations on what we can do with signage because we have to follow the federal standards of what signage is allowed.
Would you like to drive down with me and see it as soon as we're done here?
We could probably take a look at where you're talking, yeah.
Just be back by seven.
Gotta be back by seven, I have to.
Oh, yeah.
Councilman, we have actually four of those signs. Two of them on South Summit, one on Stampede, and one on Main Street here in Port. So, we did put up four signs already. It was never requested. Hope we're up in second.
Well, see, no, I'm talking about on that island right where that blue sign says "Business District." And we replaced that with, you know, the short of downtown Newcastle.
We could definitely look at that, I can speak with them.
Yeah, would it be better for Mr. Stub to...
Well, I suppose it would be better if somebody else does. That's cool then.
Long for you, sir.
And then, I have another question because I talked to the chief about this. Over by South Summit, across from the... So, had that little island got painted white instead of yellow?
So, our curv markings can be either white or yellow. It's actually, I've just been looking at statutes and all of our state policies and all of that, and there's actually no requirement for what color any cur marking should be, which I found very odd. But yellow and white are our standards. And specifically with medians, that's more of a, it's not really to tell people on the park there. It's more for a, let you know it's there so you don't hit it. You know, it's more of a...
Visibility.
Yes, a visibility or hazard warning, I would say.
Different.
Yeah. That's weird. Yeah.
Anything else?
No, we presented all of the projects last year, and it seems like you guys are making headway on getting some of them done somewhere. That's a positive thing.
Yeah, it's a, Mayor Councilman, it's a balance every year. You know, Mr. Finkel, who couldn't be here, he prepares a STIP, it's a big spreadsheet. We get different allotments every year on how much money we're gonna get for each year. And then, you know, first thing he looks at, balancing the money, and then workload, and the need, balancing money, need, then workload. So, and the needs come in from our management systems. We have three of those, pavement, bridge, and safety. And then the human element, right? Those other things are like a black box, how we call it, you know, data. But then actually out there seeing what's going on with our local guys, our maintenance, construction guys there. So, we're the human element part of it, so, yeah.
The Crip project on County Road 18, is there a paving section still in?
Yeah, right. Yep, we're doing the same thing with the county tomorrow, and we'll address that, well, probably about the same. But we were in the process of putting some solid estimates together depending on some different paving widths, how many Stephen lanes, and how many pipe they own this and that, to give them the options. So, yes, there still is going to be a paving section. And just like you call and ask me about the city tagging on their section, and we will absolutely do.
And that's the section between Duff and the highway?
Highway 85, so we can have the entire road paved, redoubted at that point in time.
Awesome.
Several years back, you used to receive funds from the highway department for maintaining the railways inside the city. Madam Mayor, do you remember what that price was? I wanna say it was $35,000, something like that. Is there, were we ever gonna see that back again?
So, are you talking about plump snow?
It was, YDOT gave us a certain amount of money for maintenance of railways.
Yeah, and that's, and it would have been mostly for plump snow. And, yeah, so that went away three years ago. And I think towns could use it for whatever the law, but most of the time you use it for removing the snow, right? So, that went away three years ago, three to four. And there is no thought of bringing that back because that was just straight state funds, which we already landed on. So, that's not the first time that question's... Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll get out of your hair. So, you have plenty of time to get ready for your meeting.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Urban, I have to take an account. You addressed the council. If I, the three-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar projects that you've got planned ahead that you talked about, so the council knows, years ago I was on that commission. And so, that's not the important part. The important part was when they came out with shovel-ready projects, YDOT was ready with their projects. And was one of the first in the nation to spend that money and had the opportunity to go back and get a little more money. Didn't get any more money that I'm aware of or remember. But I was one of the first in the nation to have everything engineered and shovel-ready. So that if there was a little bonus out there, it went onto our highways immediately and was one of the top two, top five in the nation that were getting that into the ground and spent what they wanted it to.
Yeah, there are times that we do have money coming in towards the end of the fiscal year because other states have not spent that money. And so, we gobble it up and utilize our shelf-ready jobs as much as we can, so. So, that's why I say in 2028, it shows no projects, and just wait until they probably some. To be in the meeting.
Can we stand project to you?
Yes, absolutely. That's part of this process, sir. You know, public engagement, public input, and getting input from you folks. That's why we do these things. So, please, contact us. And in your handouts, all our contact information's there, so. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for having us. Thank you.
Please rise for the execution. Dear Heavenly Father, we acknowledge that you need your wisdom and insight as we welcome your presence among us, guide us in our discussions and our decisions, helping us to seek what is best for all involved. We trust in your perfect wisdom and ask that you... We trust in your perfect wisdom and ask that you direct our meeting according to your will.
A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. And the approval of the agenda.
Matter of fact, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and executive session of Monday, July first, two thousand twenty-four.
Your Honor, I hope we approved the minutes of the meeting of July fourth, you know, July third, first, yeah, first. And, and our executive session for that night.
I said.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Citizens business verbal, Mr. French, animal lawyers.
Good evening. Um, we recently had an incident this past week in my neighborhood. I live on Frontier Avenue. And, uh, there are, there's a family that lives on Stampede, and he has two golden doodles. And they went on vacation and they left the dogs in a chain enclosed environment on a cement pad. He just took two rubber totes, put food and water and water in the other, no blankets, no shelter, no shade. And this past week with the heat, those dogs were dying. I called the police department, my neighbors called the police department, and we were told that they couldn't do anything about it. They had food and water, and that's all they were concerned with. Um, so then I called the county attorney, and next thing you know, the dogs were taken away. And Neil Adams, she was supposed to be here, but. Um, and then about two or three days later, they returned home and they had their dogs back. I would like to know why Newcastle doesn't have anything on the city ordinances about animal cruelty or abuse, but we do have it on the Wyoming statutes. And why would these people allow to have their dogs back?
Hey, Derek.
Hey, question goes to you, sir.
There's some things that I can't discuss because it's still an open investigation.
Oh, okay.
The, I gotta be really careful with.
Yeah, I think one of the names and addresses and stuff, but.
The owners of the dog, dogs, were not currently responsible for their care. They're, obviously, if you own a dog, you're responsible for its care.
Right, and I knew that they were dogs.
They push that care to someone else.
Okay.
Um, so they're not necessarily culpable for what they thought was.
Being taken care of.
Being taken care of. So that's why the dogs are back.
Okay.
As far as other details of the investigation, I can't really disclose that at this time. Like I said, it's still an open investigation.
Well, I appreciate that it's ongoing, and somebody's looking into it. Because we need to care for our pets. I mean, it, it's not any different to put your kid out on a playground, tell them, "You gotta stay out there all day and drink hot water," or something, with no shade. And it's, it's just not right. And I, I think that we should have some ordinance that further stipulate that unless you're gonna quote Wyoming statute, which I got here. Because it goes into a little more detail that they need to have adequate shelter. And, uh, I don't know how big that pen is, it's like a five by eight or something, that six-foot chain fence around it. And it's.
And that's primarily what we rely on is the state statute. Uh, we don't need an ordinance to cover everything when we have statutes. Because we can primarily put the police department, of course, it's a state statute. Uh, we do enforce some practices to, but the bulk of our duties are state statutes. And that's what we operate under in this case. The problem with that statute is it basically says food, water, and shelter. Now, I understand that they don't have immediate shelter, but I have dogs too, and they don't always have immediate shelter. But it's sort of outside or something.
Right. If they're being stored out there twenty-four, seven.
Right, yeah.
That's, that's not happening.
That's a little different.
Right. My dog has a huge yard to run in, and I've got trees in my backyard. You know, of course, if I'm home or if I'm not home, I have numbers to call you, and they've got access to my house, to my animals, you know. But I usually don't leave my animals if I'm not at all. They're all, they all go in the house, might go anywhere for any length of time. Couple hours after, or whatever, about living in the house. Because I don't trust what goes on in our neighborhood. Because I think it was last summer, we had some kids going around opening gates and letting pets out of the yards. So, yeah, I don't necessarily trust my neighborhood, so unfortunately, but, um, I guess that satisfies my inward ground. Hopefully we'll get rid of it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you for watching out for them too.
Yes, thank you.
Um, citizens business and writing, Tanya Christensen, twenty-four hour catering permit. To whom it concerns, uh, the captain bottle has been chosen to provide alcohol catering for Lynn slash Townsend's wedding. This event will be held at the Westin County Senior Center located at six two seven Pine Street, Newcastle, Wyoming, on the date of August third, two thousand twenty-four. We would like to request a catering permit for this event beginning at nine AM on the third of August, ending at nine AM on August, or the fourth of August. We thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Tanya Christensen. So the twenty-four hour catering permit, um, that under, and by virtue of provisions of section twelve dash four dash five zero two, subsection B of the State of Wyoming Alcohol Beverage Control Laws, the City of Newcastle, County of Weston, State of Wyoming, in consideration of the sum of twenty dollars paid by Tanya Christensen through the businesses Captain Ball of the City of Newcastle, County of Weston, hereby license, permits, permits and authorize Tanya Christensen, owner of Captain Ball, to sell alcohol and malt beverages in and upon the premises of the Weston County Senior Center, six twenty-seven Pine Street, Newcastle, Wyoming, an event more specifically described as follows, Townsend slash Lynn wedding. This license or catering permit is for the one, for the term of one day only, beginning at nine AM on the third day of August, two thousand twenty-four, to nine AM the fourth day of August, two thousand twenty-four.
Your Honor, I hope we approve of Tanya's request for a catering permit.
I second.
We have a motion and second for the one day only beginning at nine AM the third day of August to nine AM the fourth day of August, two thousand twenty-four. Any further discussion?
I hope it's a fantastic event, and congratulations to the couple.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed, same side. Old Business, uh, number one, Church on the Hill, abandonment easement. Chuck, can I get your information?
No. Well, uh.
Do we know where that's sitting? Do we need to?
Uh, Madam Mayor, the, given the question, we found, we haven't found it in the courthouse yet. He, he found it on the plot of the property. He, he need to double check that as, and I didn't get back with interview here, Bartlett today.
So we can channel this back?
I would recommend dating him.
Is this the alt property or the one of the future plan?
This is the, he's been across the north and basically, uh, near Walcott. From what I understand, it would go from the alley that comes up between Walcott and, West Walcott and West Mintra, and it cuts, goes across the property over to, uh, the West Hill Street. Okay.
So put this on the next.
I move that we table this until the, uh, first meeting in August. So he's lost the information earlier.
Madam Mayor, Councilman, we're, we need to finish our research in the courthouse to make sure it hasn't already been.
Will that date do you well, or will we need more time?
Needing more time.
No, one, one meeting will be just fine.
Say again?
One meeting will be just fine.
I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and second to table Church on the Hill abandonment easement to the next meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Um, seven twenty more seat rule. Um, I do have all the paperwork with the amendments, um, from, uh, Team Property Sandy Martin. So it should all be good to go, um, from this point forward. That two seventeen line was taken out or amended, and they were given the, um, did you have, you handed them that information or Chuck did in regards to policies and ordinances, so.
Nature of that part about norms.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
There's nothing under any business, any committee reports? Department heads, police chief, Derek Thompson?
Uh, you may, Mayor. Calls for service since July second of this year. Uh, Newcastle Police Department two hundred, Weston County Sheriff's Office one hundred and thirty-one, Upton Police Department twenty-four, Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department fourteen, Weston County Fire Protection District ten, Upton Volunteer Fire Department seven, Newcastle Ambulance twenty-one, and Upton Ambulance four. The only other thing I have for you is I've been getting a lot of complaints, and I, I just precedes my command with the police department about things going on in the Loaf and Jet parking lot, primarily with, um, young kids and dumping trash out and just being generally disrespectful to the, to the owners of that property. I was contacted by the property manager, I believe it was last week, and she said that they were willing to do whatever they could to help us remedy the situation. Uh, she suggested maybe putting up no loitering signs, or, um, she had a different sign in mind. I can't remember what her suggestion was, but I, I told her I would look at the statutes and ordinances that we have on books to see what would best fit the situation. And, uh, we don't have a loitering ordinance, and I think that may be helpful in, in multiple situations. So I did a little bit of research, and there are other cities in the state that have loitering ordinances. Some of them I don't really like, but there's one I really do like. Uh, it's the city of Riverton, and it says it's unlawful for any person not presently enrolled in school. This, and this, there's multiple things here, but enrolled in the school to loiter, camp out, or lounge upon the property of any school property within the city, uh, subsection A. B is it's unlawful for any person to loiter, camp out, or lounge upon any private property within the city without the consent of the owner. And C is for the purposes of this section, the term "to loiter" refers to the act of being idle, to wander aimlessly or loafing on the property of another, which has been clearly designated or marked as closed or no loitering without lawful purpose, and includes school premises or private property owned or leased by another. I kind of like the idea, if, if this is something that the council is able to, uh, creating a similar ordinance, um, that would include the, the duty of the property owner to mark that property to loiter. So if somebody chose to allow the kids or whomever to loiter on their property for whatever reason, as long as they don't mark it "no loitering," it's not something we need to enforce. Uh, I just think this is something that would give us the teeth to more cleanly deal with the problem. So you guys cannot be here, you know, leave, or here's your citation. If you come back and do it again, here's your citation. Uh, it's just the, I guess, just disrespectful nature of what's going on has gotten out of hand. And I'm looking for a cleaner way to deal with it. And I think this could be something that would not only benefit this problem, but other problems that we've had as well. Um, things like panhandling and stuff like that that go on at local gas stations or establishments. Uh, but we don't really have a great option other than trespassing. They move out on the sidewalk and do the same thing. Uh, it's still causing the business problems and things like that, so, um, I don't know how the council feels about that.
If maybe you and Cindy are trying to get together and look at putting an ordinance together, if we don't have.
If you sense us, would, would be in favor of some of those cats, would we?
And I do, I do like to look back at, um, I do like to think that, uh, property owners, you know, that, you know, are putting, wanting to put signs there if maybe, which.
Signs are already up.
Where?
Right on the property. They have been for years.
Which property?
The property in question.
Really? No loitering?
It says, it says, "Customer parking lot."
Well, if they went in there for some shooting gun, that makes them customers, you know? And they can loiter all the time.
No, it doesn't make them customers. Because that property doesn't go with the Loaf and Jet, so.
This one sounds pretty good.
So where's their at right now? Is that owned by Deckers, or is that?
No, it doesn't, Deckers doesn't own it. Somebody in Denver owns it. But there's signs up there that says, "Customer parking lot." It's been that way forever.
They've been, they've been.
They don't look at the signs.
Because they, they've been.
And there's five garbage cans, there's five garbage cans up by the building.
I have also.
But they don't throw the garbage in the, in the cans. It's all on the ground.
Parking lot. Everybody thinks it's open parking lot, like that's the spot. But if they're being disrespectful and, uh, loitering and loitering. Yeah.
Some, some, some smart ass is gonna say, "Well, they're fine loitering." You know, what is loitering?
Exactly what you're doing right now. Stand here, I'm doing that.
Stay in the classroom. I think the proper channel would be for the police committee to convene and make a recommendation with council.
I think we should be and have our city council attorney with us. I don't want to talk about this without him.
Can I say something?
Yes.
As the previous owner of that building. Um, we previously had no loitering, no skateboarding signs on that building, and I don't know what happened to them when it was sold. As far as I know, they haven't been on the building since, um, Mr. Bright has owned it. But I don't know what happened to them. But they were previously on there, and the police department did patrol there a long time, several years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's not, it's not patrolled, but it's not enforceable right now. We don't, we can't say.
Right.
Because the science is, we have to, we, we can't do that without a statute or without a statute or ordinance that backs us up.
Right.
We can't take any actual criminal action.
Right, I'm not saying about how, I mean, previously years ago, that it did, they did work. So whatever they're doing now.
So even though the owner contacted you or the property manager, um, so you can't, you can't go there and say we can ask to have you guys move on?
So the, the only statute that would give you teeth really is a trespassing statute. But the trespassing statute says that it has to be clearly marked. But the problem is, it's a business. You don't want to trespass everybody from your business, right? So we would either have to say, "Okay, you specifically are not allowed on this property." We would fill out a trespass warrant, so it would be for every single person that they didn't want there. So this gives a more general blanket. These, this group is being a problem, you could either leave the property or you will be cited that if you continue to not leave the property, then it'll be a arrest.
So if you convene with the police committee and the attorney, then you guys could define what you want in the ordinance and then they can bring it back before the council. So I mean, setting fines by how many times you're allowed to get in trouble before you're actually arrested. I mean, it could all be defined in an ordinance.
I'm sorry, would it, don't we have a curfew law, wouldn't a curfew law ticket place here that would help run these kids off? I mean, I know ten o'clock is, I mean, that still gives you plenty of time to tear up things up, but.
Well, speaking of, we're all in that ordinance. I don't know that I want to say this, but at least not be in a court tonight. The curfew ordinance is eleven P M. And it says there must be an audible signal sounded. We don't really want to sound an audible signal at eleven P M until one of these kids go. I think it was written in the days before cell phones and every kid has at least one cellphone or some time telling device on a person. I think that's something that we can rewrite and if you're right, it would be helpful, but right now, obviously you're going to get a citation, because we're not sounding an audible signal. But I mean, when I was. Missing the element of the citation or of the.
When I was in the service, they played apps at ten o'clock. So I mean, that was a good indicator of the.
I heard those complaints about who and that, I'll let them know whose idea that was.
Let's get that email out for the police committee to a little bit on this evening, so we'll get a big time for that will work for you as well, double.
That's all I have.
If you're caught loitering, you will have to give your phone up. If we threaten to take their phones, then they'll all leave.
Yeah, there you go.
Is there any questions for Chief Thompson?
Thanks, Chief.
Moving on, is City Attorney double with you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Any questions, please, City Attorney?
Why don't you have anything to report?
City Attorney Treasure Stacy Hagary?
I believe we are getting close to having all the invoices paid for last fiscal year, so hopefully I'll have the final budget numbers next. Next meeting. Thanks. The only other thing I have is I will be on vacation for the rest of the week.
You're gonna go away from us?
After I email you my assignment.
Well, you have a nice time, you deserve one, you've done good work.
Thank you.
Any questions for City Attorney? Public Works Supervisor Grace Hall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item for the two thousand twenty-five improvements project, we need to submit a resolution, we need to vote on a resolution authorizing the project and the council acknowledging that we are moving forward with this with the S R F. Requesting funding, basically.
Do I have this?
No, there should be a resolution. I guess we'll have to table this.
I move we table the resolutions for S R F funding until our first meeting in August.
So again.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion?
Um, that doesn't hurt anything, does it?
Can we cut it close?
Did you send it to me, can I go print it? I don't know if you're receiving anything.
I can pull one up.
It's pretty important that we pass the resolution so we can get it before, it goes before the slipboard, right?
Yes, it has to be done, I think it's August tenth.
But we've talked about all this before.
Yeah, it's just not proven or happened, it doesn't tell what quarter tag or you got it, so. We could, oh, we'll leave the last couple of the down items. I can get brought up for some reason.
This is the next.
Yeah, this is exciting.
Yeah, we've been out there and looked at that load, the building on Seventh Avenue, or Sixth Avenue, one of the avenues. It was getting wet, it was way deep, it was way deeper down.
Do you want to rescind your motion?
Yeah, I rescind my motion to table the resolutions for S R F funding until the first meeting of August.
So this would be resolution number four, two thousand twenty-four, entitled a resolution authorizing submission of a capital addition to the State Loan and Investment Board for a loan through the State Revolving Fund on behalf of the governing body for the city of Newcastle for the purpose of the two thousand twenty-five improvements project, a project to replace aging and failing water and sewer infrastructure at Delaware Avenue, York Street, North Sonora Avenue, and East Pointwood Street.
Don't wait, please.
I move that we approve resolution number four. Series two thousand twenty-four. The replacing of aging infrastructure on the streets that the mayor mentioned when she read the resolution.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? On that was infrastructure at Delaware Avenue, York Street, North Sonora Avenue, and East Pointwood Street.
Two or two five?
Oh, I think it'll be great that we get to replace some more failing and aging infrastructure in our city.
The original loan, total loan, were then two point one million, but with the M R G grant, it knocked it back to one point one million. So we're seeking a longer for one point one million instead of two point one million.
That's a good thing.
That was pretty huge that you got down there and got that general royalties.
That was great, yes. You've done good.
Really good, yeah.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution number four, dash two thousand twenty-four passed.
General laptop computer saved with the agent.
My next item is on the Duff Avenue Sewer Reconstruction Project for two thousand twenty-four. We've reviewed the bid documents, we only received one bid. Pot Iron Incorporated bid seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, three, two hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-five cents, which is under our, our estimated cost for this project. I would recommend the council board bid to Pot Iron Incorporated for a bid.
I move that we accept the bid from Pot Iron for seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-five cents for the Duff Avenue Sewer Reconstruction.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion?
I'm super excited for this project. Well, there replaces our failing lift station, but we've been lifting along for decades. So it's gonna be huge for all the people at the city shop and to have a nice facility that they can work in.
Councilman, the existing lift station's been there for seventy years.
Yeah, and I got a word for it for darn. Thank you, and it also ties in the school, right? So then we're gonna save some revenue that we used to have to pay to Salt Creek Water and Sewer District.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Some follow up about the grid on East Main Street, Hospital Hill. Why Dodd sent the documentation that we're responsible for repairing that box? So I met with engineer Chuck Bartlett, he's gonna look into it and try and come up with a design or contact another engineering firm to design some, design a repair for this.
Isn't that a lot of concrete truck trucking up on that hill?
Well, it's, yeah, it's, concrete broke out underneath the steel, so there's just nothing we can do with it until we replace portions of the box. So we'll begin working on that project. I would also, I mentioned at last meeting, I did not get it done before I left on vacation. I'd like to ask, request a water sewer committee meeting to discuss some of the changes in chapter twenty-six ordinance as well as some funding options for the next ten years worth of projects.
When can you have a meeting?
I was looking at next week, looking at next week.
I can eat.
I'm, I'm good next week.
Okay. I'll get any emails sent out for it.
Thank you.
Are there any questions about the reports?
On, on item number fourteen of the Public Works Report, is P W facility plans, what is that?
Public Works Facility.
That's a, it's a public works facility.
Okay, I was hoping, okay. What about the sewer dump, the RVs? Is it functioning and it's up and it's running?
Yes.
And they can get fresh water there too, if any, non-podable. That's where we have this. Okay.
Because we cannot control what happens at the site.
Nice, I got you, got you.
The Public Works Department project is a replacement for our existing facility. It's a long-term plan, right now primarily looking for funding opportunities. And honestly, the infrastructure projects have taken, taken precedence over that. Looking for a unique, unique grant, a grant or loan or something like that we can put in for that is specifically for buildings or facilities rather than infrastructure. I don't want to take up our infrastructure money with, with buildings.
I have a question on the rate increase on water from the study, we have a result for that yet or?
I sent him, I sent Mr. Brown my list of years of projects that we planned it over the next ten years, he had some dates wrong on it and he hasn't got back to you. As soon as we get that patent mine out, I think we've got the rest of the bugs worked out.
Along with Councilman Vasas' question, did you have the pulse on some grants that you could use to maybe try to fund the Public Works Facility?
Possibly. We had some issues with our grants or our SAM.gov account. And clerk acting straightened that out, so I gotta get back on it. And look, look for the, those funding opportunities, review it somewhere.
USBA has that community facilities grant?
Yep.
And that might be an option.
Did everything go well with our council meetings?
I have a crew there.
Pardon?
Everything went well with the.
I remember some nights. Oh, absolutely, and, and your crew did a real nice job, I had a quick call I had to make for the ninety-five gallon things and, and they were like that, they were there, and your people did great. They had a little over five hundred people, about five oh five to five twenty, somewhere in there, they had an exact plate count of like four ninety something and they know that they check people through without tickets, so. And yeah, the people love the band again, that I thought that heat was gonna kill us, but it didn't, it didn't, right? It was, it was a great time, good times, yeah, by all.
That's good. And the parade or something, we're all good?
As far as I know, yes. They're flying on a plane, they're out Sunday.
Sunday.
Uh, the twenty-first for the federal.
That's very good, that's good. It's great on a Sunday.
Yep.
They're closing the roads at one o'clock, but they're fifteen, if you wanted to approach that.
It was lining up with Upton's fun day, Upton, Upton days.
On Saturday.
There was an event on Saturday, so they pushed ours off on, until Sunday.
They also changed the state fair, moved it ahead a week, so of course our way out moved that too. But we'll be into it, the state fair, oh. Well, those people need a switch.
Well, just so FYI, get it out to the public that it's on a Sunday. Parade is on Sunday. All right. Anything else for? Any other questions, please?
I have no further questions.
All right, and we'll go on to claims against the city in July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I don't care. Madam Mayor, I move that this August body play for its bill and recompense our suppliers and conveyors.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
I was actually gonna move adjourned first, so we save the money, but.
Well, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Still moves.
I second.
We have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Adjourned at seven thirty-seven.
That the CEO, he, he was building a case for Piper Allergs removal. There was no doubt, that was revealed in that meeting. Was working with personnel from H and H Leadership Solutions to do that. So this situation now, who knows what information gets uncovered with an active, aggressive, targeted investigation with a purpose? You can generate information about people, you don't know if it's true, you don't know if it's valid, but if you have that information, you can't let people go back to work. I have, I know nothing, the board's done a good job of not telling anybody anything, because this is a true sticky personnel situation where you have to be very careful for Piper's protection. Because God knows what's been said about her or turned up about her, but the, once those things are said, you have to investigate them. And so the board's in a position where they have to follow through on that and bring closure to that.